Back later, it was completely over and hit my neighbors. And the last picture there were chosen side by side. It's not the last one that's happening here. You can see how, I mean, this is after I scrubbed it up. And his is still big.
Is his mileage due that much?
Yeah. But I don't think they would say anything about it. It's one of those, I mean, to hit it hard enough to break the well. And there were also, it was the, there were chunks, chunks of snow and everything else there too. But I gotta figure out how to do this.
Does it have grass cloths?
I do know, grass cloths, if you use the grass cloths, they never come out.
They never come out?
Well, they, they start the sours and deep fog.
Right.
And just is like a slime in a hole. So, no, I don't, I mulch everything.
I mulch.
Mulch is good for the very, the whole. Oh, that's your, that's my mulch.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, it's not enough.
The quarter, the quarter actually changed.
Yep. By the way, I'm going to put it out. Where they're not, we're not going to put it out. It's a good example. There we go. That's what I'm saying. They never send me that one thing. I mean, we'll probably use it, but then maybe bring it to us. Come on. Well, I guess, you know, it's, it's, nobody wants to, I'm going to find a car and turn it off. Hey, I'm sorry.
Welcome, everyone, to our South Weber City Council meeting at 6:00 P. M. On February the 25th, 2025. We'll begin with all eaters in a pledge of allegiance and Councilman Dills will offer a prayer.
I proudly consider the pie of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal Father in heaven, we are grateful that we could come here tonight and do the work of this city. Please bless us that we will be able to discern between what will impact the citizens the most and how to, how to guide our city through these next coming years. Please bless us, Father, including all of our first responders, police, and our armed forces. In this, we pray for humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll begin tonight's agenda with our public comments. If you have a comment pertaining to one of the public hearings, we would ask that you refrain and tell that public hearing to make your comments. Ask you to come up to the microphone and state your name and the city in which you reside. Try to limit your comments to three minutes or less and comment to the entire council. So we'll go ahead and begin with comments. No comments? Okay. Next, we have a presentation from UTA on a five-year service plan and Davis Salt Lake Connector. We've got Beth Holbrook here. Beth, come on up. Good to see you again. How are you?
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you. How are you guys?
Great.
Great to see you and be here with you this evening. For the record, my name is Beth Holbrook and I'm the trustee for Utah Transit Authority. That represents Davis, Weber, and Box Elder Counties. And I'm here today to kind of give you an update in regards to some of the service expansions that we're going to be doing in the next five years. So we have made some structural changes. Oh, I apologize. I just realized. I have the controller and I haven't been using it. Oh, okay, good. Not me. Not me that had the, thank you so much. So this five-year service plan, really, one of the things that we have been really trying to do is to navigate and help to address some of the growth area, in the entire area, as well as how can we increase our service and still obtain enough operators and maintenance facilities in order to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep the service going. So this is something that we have done that is new to UTA, which is actually doing our own internal five-year service plan. Wasatch Front Regional Council, which is the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, typically does one, but they're a little more regionally focused. And so what we are to do is look at some of these more granular elements, like what roads are we going to be on? And this is kind of our interpretation of what, how this connects to WFRC's five-year service plan, as well as their Wasatch Choice 2050. So as you can see, these are some of the new routes. The ones in red are crossed off because they have been either replaced or modified in some fashion. And this is just for the entire four years in every single county. Altogether in five years, we're going to add about a million miles worth of coverage. So one of the things that we, the first change we really made is the fact that we have created our change days to align always in April. Now, we do have ski service, and ski service is not part of this proposal. This is just this everyday service plan that would go on no matter what. Ski service, obviously seasonal. And so all I'm going to be talking about today is just this, but if you do have questions, of course, I'm happy to answer them. So there will be a couple of big changes for 2025 in Davis County, and then the next set of changes will be in 2028. One of the big routes is 470, and that's the huge north-south route that we have that starts in Ogden, goes all the way to downtown Salt Lake, and services every city in between. Some of the modifications on there are going to be increased service to Leighton Hills Mall. And you can see the addresses up on there and how they're going to continue to connect in that area. In addition to that, it's Anilot Drive. And I do apologize, it is the green one. And, oh, maybe that's teal here. I apologize. But maybe I'm colorblind and I don't know it. That is the route. It's hard to read these maps and I am sorry about that. And then, as you can see, it's 1500 East, 1450 South. And these changes, again, will start technically April 13th of 2025. And they're going to continue their expansion and connection. Dayton, or, excuse me, Davis County really wanted to make sure that they are having that continued connectivity to the convention center as well as the mall. And so this is some of our discussions on how to accommodate their requests. In addition, you can see that we're going to be at the DTC campus or the Davis Technical College campus. And that's going to be in a different route, the 627, and it's going to also have more frequency. And just for context, frequency just means it's how many times the bus will come to that area. And again, the reasons, the commercial areas allow for some of the other changes, which is the replacement of the Midtown Trolley. So one of the other things that Leighton City requested that we do is expand Westside service. And so in order to do that and in a really efficient way, it is easier for us to not do a trolley, which is a specialized vehicle. Those vehicles are smaller, they're 35 feet in length. And if they have a mechanical issue, we oftentimes cannot replace them. And so we end up putting a regular bus in anyway, and so what this does is it's a little confusing. And so allowing us to navigate that is much more efficient, and we're going to have more Westside service. And please feel free to ask me any questions at any time. No problem. Like I said, that's the big thing in 2025. And in 2026 and '27, no significant changes here in this area or in Davis County. The big change will be in 2028, and that's when you're going to see a lot of changes. As you know, we have a park and ride here just, what is that, northeast of the Maverick? And that is something that we utilize all the time. We certainly use it for ski, as we use it for other stops as well, and the 455 is a big one on that. We, we do have what we're going to call the Davis Salt Lake Connector, Community Connector, super long name. So we're just calling it 470X just for these purposes. It will have its own name, very comparable to, if you're familiar with Ogden's OGX, which is the Ogden Express Bus. And the Davis Salt Lake Community Connector is actually going to help us to create another multimodal area in Farmington City. And so that service is going to run from Farmington City, the front runner station, all the way to the University of Utah Research Park. And that's going to be electric vehicles, about 18 electric buses with chargers. So we have the fast chargers, which are the overhead chargers, and then the longer, just plug-in chargers at our facilities at night. And we anticipate that that will be every 15 minutes, so that's going to be highly connected. It's going to go all the way through Farmington Centerville, Bountiful North Salt Lake, onto Beck Street, through Salt Lake City, and up Second South, which is their major bus corridor. Salt Lake City has created a dedicated bus lanes on Second South. And this change is going to be part of the plans that we have, not only for addressing growth, but also for the Olympics. We feel like these types of connectivity features are really going to help all of our residents navigate, not just through Olympics. I'm sure we're going to have other major events, but obviously that's the big one coming up. Did I get that right? Okay, yes. The next route I'm going to talk about is the 600. Again, these are all 2028. I'm giving you guys plenty of time to give me feedback if there is any that you need to do. The exception, of course, is 2025 is pretty baked at this point, but we can always make modifications as necessary should we have, should we find that our ridership is not meeting our expectations. Route 600 is going to replace the northern piece of the 470. And what that's going to basically do is it's going to allow for greater connectivity. Again, you're going to find that these, some of these changes are specific to Farmington South. So the Davis Salt Lake Connector is the big impetus to getting this done. And then these are going to become more localized connector routes. And what's going to, and what that means basically for South Weber is that you're not going to necessarily see any changes, but you will see maybe frequency changes, and that's going to be the big thing that we're going to bring as well. We are trying to get more and more of our routes to the 15-minute service capacity, mostly because, and this is what we hear all the time, is, you know, if, if I knew that the bus was coming quicker, I wouldn't worry so much about where I need to go. And we have found that frequency really has been a huge impact to almost all of our service. Not mentioned on here, but certainly one of the impacts is the frontrunner that we're going to be doing. That project is the frontrunner double tracking. And that's basically going to create 15-minute service on our commuter rail and then 30-minute off-peak. So 15-minute peak, 30-minute off-peak. So that means you can catch the frontrunner from Ogden all the way through Provo. There are longer range plans for expansion, but for now, that's just where it's going to be. And it's going to include Sunday service as well as more vehicles. And we feel like that's going to be that real good connective piece, certainly for the Olympics, but also, again, for all the communities that are going to be serving the area. Um, you bet. Yeah. Yeah. Great question. Both. We did just buy some more what we call bi-level cars. And those are made by Bombardier, in case you had that question in your mind. You probably didn't. And so basically, those bi-level cars can actually be added to an existing locomotive. So in other words, right now, we have three Bombardiers on two, and then the locomotive itself. One of those cars is a bike-friendly, so there's a little more open space on the main level. So we could just add it to that, which is going to be in part of what we will probably do, but there's also going to be new vehicles. The longer range goal, again, this is what we'd consider to be post-Olympics, so past 2034. There will be a desire to have electrification in some capacity, and what that looks like is going to partially be based on the vehicles. We currently have a contract with Stadler to build our light rail vehicles for the blue line replacement. And they are actually working on a, this was legislation from a couple of years ago, but they're working on a new electrified train that can go on our existing track. And obviously, it's a very different dynamic, but we, we hope that they'll be successful because they're partnering with the Utah State University on that. And if that is the case, then we will be able to put multiple vehicle types. We call them train sets with the locomotive and the cars that are for the riders. And these would be similar, but yet the propulsion systems are within the vehicle itself. So we will see how that goes, but it's a great question. We do anticipate just literally getting more vehicles, but adding to what we have. That was the longest answer, wasn't it? So the next route is the 609. This is going to be 30-minute service, and it's going to hit the park and ride on 89, the D Event Center, and Farmington Station. And again, one of the elements of why we chose Farmington Station is that it can also be serviced by our Salt Lake facilities. And that's going to become really critical. Number one, we have limited space right now at our current Ogden facility, and we're rebuilding. So we're going to need to have that type of help, but also, longer term, it's also going to be advantageous for us as well. This is going to be, once this is completed, it's just going to become this kind of like localized route again in this area. And the 455, now, when it says discontinued, it's only discontinued as of south of Farmington. That's going to become a different number, and you can see the routes 400, 417, the 470X, and the 609. And again, that's that regional piece that we've been talking about in terms of how we can continue to do our service and be more effective and efficient about it. So for context, the 455 today stops at your park and ride, goes to Weber State University, that's where it originates, and all the way south, all the way to the University of Utah Research Park. So it's a long route. And what this will do is it will basically loop more frequently during the day, once the Davis Salt Lake Connector is in place.
Quick question. How many do we, how many routes do we have that do use the park and ride here in South Weber? Is that the only one?
No, the 455 is the main one, because that does the south, the, excuse me, I keep saying South Weber and I meant State Weber State. Apologies. It's not just the 455, it's also the 470, and then we have our, what, I think it's the 617, oh, I'm sorry. That's the ski service as well. And again, that's just the regional piece, and that's why we keep it a different number. But these all will, if they are currently hitting it, they will continue to hit it. And if they are not, they'll become part of a more localized service. Because we do anticipate that more and more people are going to be looking at other options. We don't anticipate expanding and adding lanes to either US 89 at this point, nor to I-15. Now, there are some discussions as you get further north, but for the most part, what we are hearing is that that's going to be pretty much set in stone because, as you know, economic development has already occurred right next to the freeway for many, in many parts. And so how we are going to do that in the future is really going to be critical. So it will continue to be more and more access to buses.
So you think those three are going to be able to handle the Olympic events?
Oh, that's a different question, yeah.
Quite a, quite a force of parking up there last time they came here.
Yes.
So.
That is an excellent question, and I can't answer that at this point. As you know, Brad Wilson was just appointed to become the CEO. I believe he's the co-chair of the committee itself. And that is the number one discussion point that we're going to be having. Mostly because we need to understand what those needs are going to be for the Olympics and how we can, how we are going to navigate that. Because we loosely would anticipate that there would not only just be park and rides. Just for context, we currently have interlocal long-term agreements with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to co-use their parking facilities at churches during the days. And it's not everywhere, but we think that that's probably going to be part of some of these types of connectivity things that, that are going to occur for the Olympics only, that type of thing. But you're right, no, those buses are not going to be sufficient. We probably will have some type of a structure that has a huge amount of frequency and multiple, multiple vehicles during the day. And the access point is probably going to be modified. That's, I hope that that kind of answers your question, because I really don't have definitive details right now.
Thank you.
But great question. Okay, let's see. And let's see. Right now, also, one of the other things that we are looking at doing is ultimately increasing our Westside service as a whole. And we anticipate that in 2026, it's going to be a huge change for Weber County. Not necessarily impacting you, but it could, because you guys are neighbors. And then more of the Davis County, so like Clinton, Syracuse, all of those cities are going to start to see bus service as they continue to evolve as well in terms of growth. And I hope you liked that I said evolve. Thank you. But last one is, or maybe not last one, the 470 is obviously going to be discontinued south of Farmington, and then the 473, same situation. Again, the frequency and then the connectivity pieces, we think, will be, make it much more efficient for what we're trying to do moving forward. This is just a really tiny, hugely a lot of info on the Davis Salt Lake Connector itself. This is a, this is currently a federal request project. We do anticipate submitting all of our paperwork by August of this year. We've identified the local match, and so now we are looking for the federal side of that. Now, I can't answer the larger question, which I can feel people are going to want to ask, which is how's that going to work federally? I do not know. But that is, at this point, we've lined up all of our ducks. We will see how that goes. And then this is just, and this is what we handed out to you. We did a huge economic study of the value of transit specific to our area. Because you hear anecdotally all these different numbers, and you want to know, does that really impact us the same way? And we found that for every dollar that we've put into our system, again, in the infrastructure side, it equals about $5.11. And you might ask, what does that mean? And what it really means is that ultimately, we are moving people to either, to go to work, to go to school, to go to where they live. And as we are doing that, it's actually investing in our workforce, it's investing in all of these other components so that we can continue to have connectivity, because we know that the roads themselves are only going to be improved and not expanded. So with that, again, any questions I can answer, please feel free to reach out at any time. If you, if you think of it, just don't text me at 3:00 A. M., but otherwise, feel free. Thank you so much. Oh, and you know what? The worst part? I apologize. I forgot to introduce Chandler Butler, whom you might recognize from Senator Romney's office. He is now with UTA, and we're very excited to have him here. He's our government relations manager, and his focus is you. He is all about the cities and the counties. So you will definitely get a chance to see him more and pick his brain, but not quite yet, because he's very, very new.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Beth. Okay, our next item is our annual comprehensive financial report from Gilbert and Stewart. I've asked Councilman Windsor if he would kind of lead us in on this. He's our chair over our audit committee, so.
Thank you, Claire. Just, just a brief overview, you've had the audit in your packet. This year was a unique year in that we had some change in our staff that persist, guided us to wanting to have additional help. So our contract with Canadian Christensen. So our contract with Canadian Christensen, we asked them to help staff, kind of educate staff, train staff in the audit process, the forms to put together. And they assisted us in doing that. And with that, we contracted for one year with Gilbert Stewart, who we have a representative here who can answer your questions to do our audit. And so through the audit process, you know, just to the punchline, they found no findings, which is the best audit report you can get. The personal note I wanted to put on this was that it's, it's it's good to see how staff are working with the council and managing our resources, our revenue and our money. We're seeing positive increases in in some of our fund balances. We're seeing some good decision making being made all throughout the budget. Lastly, the investment in our audit, in our auditors is going to help staff. They're putting together standard operating procedures and some checklists, if you will, for future work. Brett has done a tremendous job. Kudos go out to him for his response on behalf of the staff. In essence, the the auditor and Ken Christianson, in this time, Gilbert Stewart works for the council. They're our contractor and they're basically giving us a report card on staff. And the report card information we got is very well done. Not getting into the details, I'm sure if you have questions, they could be answered, but we're going to invite Ron to come up to the podium and give what additional information he might want to present on the audit and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Windsor.
Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, appreciate you allowing me to be here to speak with you tonight. What I'd like to do is just take a few minutes and tell you what we do as auditors and the conclusions that we come to and how we came to those conclusions. So for a city, there's really three areas that we look at. First of all, we want to make sure the financial statements are materially correct, that they meet accounting standards, that they can be relied upon. The second thing is we want to make sure that internal controls are designed, implemented and they're effectively working within your city. And then the third thing is we want to make sure your compliance will stay law. Is that better? Okay. So as far as the financial statements go, we we take the trial balance of the city and then we perform a number of tests on those balances. We go out and verify cash balances, accounts receivable balances with the with the state. Debt balances, we'll confirm those with outside parties to make sure that what we're showing on the books matches what they have. We pull a number of invoices. At the beginning of the audit, we pulled a a sample of invoices. We want to make sure that the check matches the invoice, that it ties to the general ledger, that it's posted in the proper period. And then also the controls are being followed, that there's approvals and those processes are are being followed. We also look at invoices for fixed assets. We pull a number of invoices that have happened after the end of the year to make sure those are recorded in the right period. To make sure that the the expense hits the right, the proper period. There's a number of calculations that are on a financial statement. So we'll go through those as far as depreciation expense, your pension liabilities, crew payroll. We'll go through and recalculate those balances to make sure those are materially correct and meet those accounting standards. And we also do a lot of analytical reviews. We'll look at this year, we'll compare it to last year to the year before. If there's issues or things that are big differences, that's when we start to design additional tests and ask different additional questions. And then there's a number of other tests that we perform on those balances to make sure those are materially correct. Through our testing and evaluation, our opinion is, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above percent fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of South Weber City as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. And the respective changes in fund balance and cash flows were applicable there for the year and ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So that's a, an unqualified, unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion or the best opinion you can receive. So what that means, we feel like through our testing and evaluation that that these numbers that you have in front of you are materially correct and they do meet accounting standards. Second thing we do is look at internal controls. We do that through walkthroughs, interviews, questionnaires. Like I said, as we, as we pull samples of invoices, we're looking at those to make sure we're following those procedures that we have. We don't give an opinion on controls, but we do evaluate those controls as we go through our testing process.
What's the difference?
I'm sorry?
What's the difference?
Well, if if we were going to give you an opinion, then we're, they would, we'd actually physically say, you know, in our opinion, this is what we evaluated and looked at and tested. We would probably test those controls a little bit more if we were going to opinion. Our does our test quite a few.
I was going to say, the other way to do this, you could do an internal audit where they go through all of your controls. And that wasn't what those contracted for these gentlemen at this time, but that's what we can do, additional cost.
For us, we're kind of a high level, right? Where we're making sure your controls are evaluated, but we're not going in and testing each individual control. Question, thank you. So through those, those procedures, our walkthroughs, interviews, we feel like there's controls within the city. Had there been holes in in the controls, had there been large portions of the city that didn't have controls, we'd bring that to your attention. And let you know, hey, we have some issues here that we need to work on. We didn't find that. We feel like your controls are designed and implemented and are effective. So the third thing we do is we look at the state compliance. So the state auditor gives us certain procedures that we need to look at on an annual basis, a three-year basis. So they give us the areas that we need to look at and the procedures to perform. This year, we looked at budgetary compliance, fund balance, justice court, fraud risk assessment, restricted taxes, government fees and inner fund or enterprise fund transfers. So those are the areas we looked at. We performed the procedures that the state auditor gives us to perform and found that that you were in compliance with those areas that we looked at. So there's no issues that we needed to bring to your attention at this point. So that's a really quick review of what we do as auditors, the conclusions that we came to and how we came to those conclusions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I do have one more clarification, it might be more for staff or yourself, but on audit page sixteen, it's board packet thirty four. It talks about capital assets not being depreciated. And comparing last year to this year, there seems to be a a transition movement of some numbers where I do see under capital assets net of accumulated depreciation for other than buildings, a significant change. So I'm on, again, board packet thirty four. Under the capital assets, this is audit page sixteen. I just wondered if you could help me understand the philosophy change, why those numbers moved from one category to the next category? If that was an accounting practice or is that a Gatsby rule? Or some, some help with understanding those would be appreciated.
So are we looking on page fourteen?
On board audit packet sixteen.
My page sixteen is a, it's the income statement, so I'm not quite sure.
Statements of net position. Board packet thirty four, if we can get that pulled up, please. There we go, on the screen right now. And if you look first, it says capital assets not being depreciated, land and water rights is now six point four million, sorry. Get moved around if we can get back to that page, please. Thank you. Six point four million for governmental activities this year. Oh, we're, we're looking at the business, it it went from business type activities to governmental activities. I'm trying to understand why the the movement of the monies. She was a sixteen point seven million for improvements other than buildings. Or am I misreading this?
Sorry.
This might be more for staff, sorry.
Yeah, the, the two different columns aren't year to year. One is the governmental activities, one is the business type activities. So it's just a snapshot for this or for the fiscal year.
Thank you for the clarification. I just needed more mic time, what can I say?
Hey, anyone ever have any other questions?
No questions.
Ron, thank you very much.
Typically, this isn't an action item on our agenda, but typically the audits are accepted by the the council. So I don't know if we can put this on our next, next agenda so that we can formally accept the audit as part of the governmental authority we have. Without approving it, we're accepting it. Because they are doing a report for the council, we so we have to formally accept that.
Thoughts on that? Is the council need to formally accept the audit? Can you do that? Even though it's a presentation style instead of a.
I'll second that.
There we have a motion in a second, do we need a roll call or just all in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to extend a thank you to our auditor for their services this year, appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Hey, our consent agenda insisting of December tenth, twenty twenty four minutes amended. January twenty eight, twenty twenty five minutes, February eighth, twenty twenty five minutes. January's checks and December's budget to actual. Does any council have any questions or concerns or changes they would like to make to any of these items?
Just one question, page eighty five in the packet, it seems like it's part of minutes, but it seems out of place. I think that still belongs in the back, I just think it was out of place. If I could just get that confirmed, that'd be great. Oh, okay, I get it.
It was the test to see if you read the packet. Good job, Jeremy.
You passed.
Way to go. I actually had to go back to watch the video to make sure it was that, so.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, thanks. Next item, resolution twenty five dash zero five franchise agreement with Strata Network. Their networking company that wants to come into town. Any questions on this?
I noticed in the agreement, it says that maybe if the gentleman from Strata could answer this, is that okay, mayor?
Yes. We have someone.
Do you mind coming up for us?
I didn't know that's who that was, I would have had him come up.
Good evening, what can I do for you?
What was your, what was, what was your name?
My name is Nick Woodland, I'm a ride of way agent with Strata. Drove out today to be with you and hopefully answer whatever questions you have, so.
Perfect, thanks, Nick. My question is on this, are you, is Strata intending on, I I read you're capitalizing on the new development going in. Is there an, any intent to continue throughout the city? In the contract, it says you can, I just didn't know if that was your intent, just to continue the entire citywide or just as you see fit?
So right now, we don't have any further plans to move here within South Weber. The current development would be with Nelson Homes and their Riverwoods Development. Right now, we just have a contract with them to provide service for that development only. It's just an open end agreement so that if you do want additional service from Strata or we see, you know, the need to move forwards, then that gives us the option in the future, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all, the only question I had, mayor.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, would someone like to make a motion then?
Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution twenty five dash zero five, franchise agreement with Strata Networks.
Second.
She can add a second, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Sorry for the long drive, I was waiting for that.
Thanks, Nick.
You too.
Need a motion to open a public hearing on fiscal year twenty twenty five budget amendment.
So moved.
Seconding.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A public hearing is open, anyone have any comments? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Resolution twenty five dash oh six fiscal year twenty twenty five budget amendment. Any discussion needed on this, Brett would be willing to answer any questions that we may have.
I can answer any questions.
I'm grateful that it's under budget, that's great.
Okay, with that, someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve resolution twenty five oh six fiscal year twenty twenty five budget amendment as presented.
Seconding.
Anyway, we have a motion in a second, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Next item, purchase of forklift and pallet jack. Any discussion on this?
I would like to have staff clarify if this is state contract or what procurement process was used for this procurement request. Thank you.
Mayor, make a motion to approve, approve the purchase of forklift and pallet jack for thirty five thousand, seven hundred, eleven dollars and thirty four cents.
Seconding.
The motion man, the second, we'll do roll call, starting with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Do I need to specify to Arnold Machinery, I'm sorry?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You're just good.
Done.
Hey, let's have a motion to open a public hearing on declaring park playground equipment as surplus.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A public hearing is open, if anyone has any comments, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll ask for a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, resolution twenty five dash zero seven declaring cherry farm playground equipment as surplus. Any discussion on this resolution?
The only thing that I, is now the right time, David, to talk about what I just, what I, okay. So I I had a member of the community come to me earlier this week and ask if this is going to be an opportunity to obtain this equipment. So in talking with David earlier, he said there is an opportunity, once it's declared surplus, to go down that road. And we didn't do that with the other park equipment because we felt like it was too dilapidated and couldn't really do anything with it. I don't know if cherry farms is as dilapidated or as likes. And even if it is, if somebody just wants to purchase it, that's not a big deal, right? There's not a, is there anything else we would have to do, I guess?
I can speak to process and maybe Shay can speak to the state of the equipment. As far as process goes, once the council declares it surplus, if there's any value to it, we can hold a public auction or we can send it to auction. Knowing that there's interest makes us potentially want to follow that path. If there's not value, then it it's just scrapped. After you brought it up to me before the meeting, I leaned over to Shay and she said, as part of the bid that we have, it includes having the company, you know, pull it out and remove it. And so we may need to think of logistics if we do want to try to sell it. The question is, what state is it in and if it has any value? I know from a liability standpoint, part of the need to change it out and replace it is that, you know, it's getting to the point where liability wise, we're concerned and so it may not be in that state, but Shay, can you speak to that?
Sure, yeah, as it's pretty aggressive to pull those out. So once it comes out, you, they might not want it. So we could see at that point. Another piece to this is of why we had them take it out instead of us, Public Works taking it out. During the spring season, April, May, June is so busy for parks just mowing and doing the basic maintenance. So if we do this, that takes away from everything else we do. And so I think it would be best if they just took it out instead. So if we're trying to find logistics and then sell it, that just adds a lot more during that section of time in the spring.
But you're speaking about that as a whole.
But you're speaking about that as a whole unit. If people wanted to part it out, which I would assume there would be, uh, plenty of, uh, slides and things like that, that. People, if they came and. Were willing to take it off of it, knowing that we're not going to do that. Um, are there things like that that would be able to be sold?
The liability of that part, so once you start to deconstruct the actual playground, it opens up. Um, like you take the slide off, then you have to put like a barrier there. And that's really like a, a no-no, because then you're messing with the integrity of the actual playground. So.
But we could close the playground once we sell it. Jamie?
Yeah.
What do you think about it? Is it too big of a risk to part it out?
To part out the playground?
Yeah. Is there any comeback against the city for it? Or just?
If you, yeah, if you have. Knowledge that it's unsafe and then sell it for use, I think that presents a risk.
But when have you parted out? So like the slides or the, you know, some of the, the.
We could sell it and have the buyer sign a waiver that they acknowledge to receive it as is and do their own inspection.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what kind of market exists for that stuff.
Yeah.
I, I guess maybe to me it would depend on. The person and what they're trying to do.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe you pursue it and if it doesn't work into what, what we're trying to do, then it's, you just say no, but.
Yeah.
Maybe they can come and they have the capability to take the whole thing out and haul it off.
They indicate the amount or.
The.
Not the cost necessarily, but do they want all of it? Do they want part of it?
Conversation didn't go that far. So, um, all I know is that they have, uh, they likely have a place where they could put the entire thing if they wanted the entire thing. But whether, whether or not they would want the whole thing and or not, that's up to them, but. I think what I, what I was hearing Joel talk about, or what I, the way I interpret his question is if somebody just wanted. The slides as an example. Is there a way to say this playground is no longer? You're not allowed to use this playground for this period of time, or is there a liability, even if we put up like yellow tape around the whole thing saying, don't enter? Does the city still have liability if we tried to part out pieces of it, uh, knowing Shaylet? I called you by your name, so that's fantastic. I'm just not gonna use names. That's good. Um, I have that same problem at work too, so it's nothing personal, I promise. Um, but knowing that it's unsafe, once you like remove a piece. Like, do we still hold liability if someone decides to cross a line that we say, don't cross this line? And we, we would.
I would think we would.
That's mine.
I mean, it'd be something more robust than just tape. I mean, like she said, we'd have to block it off. I think if we started getting into all of that.
I think that becomes complicated.
That was costing us more money than we're probably selling it for.
So I just, just to interrupt Blair, sorry, I'm looking at this and knowing how these are attached. If you removed one slide, that's gonna be structural integrity, like she's saying, on one section of it.
Yeah.
I don't feel like we should do that and like. Piece it out that way. If there was, um, they wanted a slide, we could sell a slide, but even if you took off, like. For example, I'm looking in the photo here, this little. Ladder with monkey bars that go across, even if you just took off that section, it would still, that's still providing support to other things too. Like, or this big slide tower. It's not, I, I don't think it's functional. I think if somebody wanted a slide, we could probably remove slides efficiently, but if they are like, oh, I want this platform. Well, this platform's gonna be attached to this platform and then you're not gonna have. That support and when it is taken out, it's gonna be difficult. So I don't care if, if we wanna try to sell slides. But I don't think we should do anything other than that, honestly.
Well, I'm wondering if maybe the only, only probable or likely solution is it has to be timed with whenever the company is going to come and remove the equipment. At that time, they can come and maybe grab a couple pieces that's already been pre. Agreed upon or something. Would that be the only solution that we?
Are they, are they charging us to, to remove it, you think? To me, it would be all or nothing. Take it out, you can have it. Or, or and. Or, or don't, because I think when we start, but that's, I mean, who knows what they want on it. You could ask them or Dave can ask them or whatever, but.
Well, that's why I brought up the slides specifically, because I think you could take off the slides. But, yeah, uh, messing with any of the metal poles, unless they do want to take the entire thing. Um, really, those metal poles are the only way to get it out of the ground.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah.
Um, so it would kind of like you said, an all or nothing, but I don't know. Um, it, it's totally up to you guys, but I think, I think people are looking at the, the slides themselves, the condition they're in and thinking, you know what? My kids might like this, but. I don't know, or what, so. A thought that I have, just. Part of the necessity or, or process for a public entity to dispose of property like this is equal opportunity. Um, for people to be able to get that. So trying to work the logistics of. Figuring out a date when it's gonna be removed, trying to communicate with people that if you are interested, you need to make contact prior. Or. We're just removing it and if it is salvageable at that point or usable at that point. Then have the conversation. The, the logistics of it seem to. Seem to be difficult, but. If people want it, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm interested in, I'm interested in trying to help people have it if they want it, but. There's that equal opportunity piece, so. Normally it'd be easy to just say, hey, let's talk to this individual and kind of work it out with them, but we've got to make sure. If there's other people that are interested in too, they have the opportunity to. Also. Have that chance.
Yeah. Okay, I, I'm not trying to complicate it, but I know that there was a, there was a serious interest in.
If it's kind of an all or nothing thing, maybe that's the first thing to find out. And if you want them to contact me, I'm happy to talk with them.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, where were we?
Looking.
Looking for a.
Declaring this.
Yeah, we're trying to find it.
Need a motion on twenty. Twenty five oh seven. Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty five oh seven declaring Cherry Farms Playground Equipment as surplus.
Second.
The motion and a second will do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, purchase of. Very farm park playground equipment. Questions?
Discussion on? Discussion on our last item. I'm sorry. I know we're, it's, it's fine. I know, I know, but. I'm sorry. With them removing it, they are more than likely just going to use equipment to remove it. They're not just gonna like bolt cut it.
That's what she was saying.
Yes. So there's, it would be. A significant expense and time for somebody to come and remove that. So that needs to be considered too. Because it has to line up with our timeline, like you said. Okay. Um, I like buying some new equipment for that, so I have no discussion and I'd be happy to make a motion. To approve the purchase of Cherry Farms Park Playground Equipment. Um, in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy four dollars.
Motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
Further discussion? Yes, please. Um, is this state contract?
Yes.
It wasn't clear, okay.
Yeah.
I'll add that next time, right on the staff report. That'll be easier, not just on the bid.
I'm a little confused about the motion. Not that I disagree with it at all, Angie, but, um. The option that's being recommended, option one B, has a different number than what you put in your motion. So I'm trying to clarify, what are we?
Oh. You know what? I did jump the gun. I rescind my motion because I did have a question. Motion rescinded. Sorry, Michelle. Okay. Um. On page two seventeen of the packet, it gives us an option, like a breakdown of option one B. Uh, I don't know that we really need this welcome sign for seven hundred and twenty seven dollars. That just says ages five to twelve. That doesn't matter, because you're gonna have teenagers jumping on that anyways.
It's so bizarre, isn't it?
Yes.
So in.
It's requirement.
Yeah. Yeah.
By whom?
What do you call it? CPSI, so Certified Playground Safety Inspectors and ASTM, so American Standard of. Some.
Testing the materials.
There you go. Yeah.
Alright.
So if we don't have that, we.
You do not comply.
Not compliant, and then the trust would say, okay, we, you know, we'll give you another report. You need to have this and.
We did go on and put it on the one down and.
Wow, okay.
Make your motion.
Okay.
So my question goes back to staff in the packet, or recommended option one B has a total price of one hundred and twenty three thousand, five ninety five and thirty cents. But the resolution recommendation has a hundred and fourteen thousand, three seventy four. What are we approving tonight and what's the dollar amount?
The one fourteen, because we don't need the playground chips. Installed or, and then it comes, it takes freight off too.
Okay, so, okay, I understand what you're doing now. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make another motion that's the same as my other motion, which is. Approving the purchase of Cherry Farms Park Playground Equipment in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy four dollars.
I'm not getting involved again.
Seconding.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Your roll call vote, starting with Councilman Howerson.
Aye.
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 I'm so excited.
Motion carries, thank you. Next item, purchase of two Public Works Lawn Mowers. Any discussion on this?
Just another clarification, what procurement process did we use for lawnmowers?
State contract.
Thank you.
Did we?
Yeah, it'd be better if I just put it on the staff report, so I'll do that. It's on the bid.
Can I ask why you keep asking that question?
Because there's certain rules under procurement code, that's both the city has and state has. And for this amount, if, uh, we didn't use state procurement code, then it'd be a sole source, which is problematic, because this is not a sole source procurement. There are others who can provide this type of equipment. So I wanted to make sure that we are following the right procurement process.
So you're saying that Wilkinson is?
Yes.
Okay, because I just, I don't see anything, uh, on there.
It's on page two nineteen in the last sentence of the bid, right before it says, all quotes are valid for ten days. It has the state contract number.
And actually, that's.
There we go.
Showing their state.
I see it. I was looking for it up at the top with.
And it shows their state discount on there.
Mm-hmm, and on page two twenty.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Would like to make a motion now.
Can I ask one more question on this actually? Sorry. I'm sorry, this came in. Um, what's the? If it's in here, I totally missed it, so I apologize in advance if it's already answered. What's the expected lifespan of these new mowers? Like.
Depends on how we run it, depends on, you know, all those variables. So if we put a lot of hours on it and use one mower over the other, you know, sometimes the brand.
But the idea is by buying these two new ones is that we're gonna have a full fleet of mowers, right? So that we shouldn't be overusing one over another.
And didn't you talk about a rotation, a five-year rotation?
It's five years. What do we, capitalize, what do we depreciate them over? Are we gonna depreciate them over five years or ten years? That's the very question, so.
I think looking at the other ones, they were a five-year depreciation, but I, I will.
I think that's your question.
Thank you. I'm good now. Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of two Public Works Lawn Mowers for forty four thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and eighty one cent.
Seconding.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. We'll do roll call, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Hey, unanimous motion carries. Look for a motion to open public hearing on declaring. Multiple vehicles as surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A public hearing is open. Anybody have any? Comments?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I guess don't need a mayor, you can do this yourself.
No, we need you, man.
Resolution twenty five dash oh eight declaring seven vehicles as surplus. Any discussion on this?
I do have a question. I know this was part of our rotation and we. But I thought we had discussed that the brush trucks would be reconsidered.
Yeah.
Me too.
That was in the meeting.
Um. One, they can't have hardly any miles on them. We haven't even had our wildlands program going. But, so I, I don't know. I, I, my question was, and I didn't know who would be here to. Answer is, I mean, how many miles do those brush trucks have on them? I think the other trucks I'm okay with personally, but, uh. That was my question. Maybe you know the answer, David.
I don't know the miles exactly. I'd have to look at.
And they, they couldn't have gone.
Are we, are these the ones we're talking that had like eight thousand miles?
Again, I'd have, I'd have to look.
I don't even remember.
I mean, some of our public works don't get tons of miles on them either, because we're not traveling a long time, but.
Because I know that they were donated a bunch of, uh, equipment.
Not the, not these ones. Yeah, not those ones.
That was, that was before we started purchasing the actual brush truck.
Yeah, I, I remember the same thing when we had the budget meeting, uh, the work meeting. Um, we looked at that and we were going to pull those out.
I remember now. We talked about surplusing. Okay, no, we talked about surplusing two and being able to get a third truck. For those are the two bottom of the ramps, right? Okay, yes.
When we originally had the, the rotation schedule, um. My memory was that we were doing all seven of these, but.
I wasn't part of that, sorry. That's.
Yeah, that was my memory, but I'd have.
Very, very. Apparently you guys need to like pay more.
If there's any, if there's any concern about that, we can go back and look. You don't have to, you don't have to declare those surplus now. I, I, one of the.
Rotation, stay with three-year rotation.
Cause, cause yeah. Unless we have the, those brush trucks for our wildlands and that going down the road, actually doing that right at the moment.
Well, there's a, there's a couple of things that factor into the resale value, right? One is mileage, one is age, um, and unified is the, is the company that's suggesting that we can elongate those out. The brush trucks, though, take the most time to order and get. Um, what's the right, what's the right word?
Outfitted.
Thank you, yes. Um, outfitted and so. Some of this is kind of the beginning of a process for us, kind of a, a routine that we wanna get into of at the beginning of a fiscal year. Identifying the rotation, surplusing all of those that are gonna rotate each year. I think we understand that. The issue, though, is that some of these, the fire brush trucks. They don't have much use on them, and I understand that. Um, the new company would definitely like us to remove all of our leases from Bancor and move them over to them as soon as possible. That's been done. That part's been done. So then. Because it says up here, but due to the delay and the trying to remove our leases from Bancor, we had to wait until the transfer was completed. Okay, so these all here are not part of Bancor. They're not part of that at all. So this would start the new company. Well, who are they again? Unified. Unified, okay.
So they've already been moved.
Yes.
Who, they're already in unified, correct?
Correct.
They're already there.
Yeah. Even brush trucks?
Yes.
Everything.
Everything is over to unified.
So my, my bigger point was. We'd at one time, these are not everyday driver trucks. Public Works Trucks, we talked about not having. I, I mean, I consider that an apparatus.
Okay.
I mean, it's, we, we talked about, I mean. Going clear back to when we started, the fire department just kinda got put on there at the end. It was never all part of.
The large, yeah, the large apparatus were designed to be.
The large apparatus.
Hold until they run out.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying we have to hold a brush truck till it runs out of life, but I'm. Yeah, that, it, it's not just like going and buying a public works work truck or a. It's, it's different than buying an everyday vehicle.
Since we disagree on this, um, is this something that we could just continue to? Uh, one of the next meetings when we have all of the information and can have a full discussion again? Yes, it'd be easy to pull those two. Don't declare those surplus and we can gather the additional information for you that you want. I, I will point out one thing that we talked about three years ago when we started the rotation idea, and that was. We are always going to run into a moment when we declare a vehicle surplus and feel like it still has useful life. And I.
A hundred percent agree with you. Other than we talked about specific trucks, like the brush trucks should not be on this, just like the ambulances and just like those were specific discussions and not just lease rotations.
Okay. We can pull those two off and answer any questions that you have about that.
I could have sworn that we also had a discussion about showing the financial gain or loss. Based on how many years each, the life of each truck, right? Is it possible? One, I, I think I agree with you, removing the brush trucks from there so we can give this additional data and more conversation. I'm okay with everything else, but I think it'd be helpful to show that financial. Analysis of, okay, on the brush trucks, when they're three years old, they're worth this much on the resale. When they're five years old, they're worth this much on the resale. And are we doing ourselves any favors by holding off? And are we doing ourselves any favors by holding off or not? I think that would be very beneficial.
Yeah, that's the type of service that Unified provides and analysis, so we can, we can work with them to get those numbers for you.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero eight, declaring seven vehicles a surplus with the following amendments. Removing brush truck number one with VIN ending in eight, six, one, and removing fire brush number two with VIN ending in eight, six, zero, for declaration of five vehicles a surplus.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Hey, motion carries.
And David, if they can come back and say here's why, I'm, I'm all in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide data there, and, and so it doesn't feel like we're holding on to an old model without information.
Okay, discussion items, legislative review, anything there, Dave?
Uh, yes, quite a bit, actually. Um, I will try to summarize. Let me pull up the legislative information that I have here, the notes. In LPC yesterday, they started the conversation with, uh, the phrase, this is peak silly season. So, uh, not necessarily on what your political views are, but the last ten days or so of the session always have so much, um, churning and fervor and things changing and whatnot, that it just really is a lot going on, a lot of moving pieces, so. Um, a couple of main points to bring up, um, probably the most interesting bill that, uh, that relates specifically to South Weaver, uh, that's already been numbered as HB three fifty-five, which is the gravel pit bill. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about that. All of the cities that have, uh, gravel pits within their borders have met multiple times with the league. The league has been working with the sponsor, trying to, um, it is an oppose position by LPC. Salt Lake County has officially moved off of the oppose to neutral, which is a, which is kind of a big deal, uh, for them and for the bill. It, uh, most likely will pass the House. Uh, it has all kinds of steam for passing the House. Um, there's question about whether or not it will pass the Senate. The league will be working with the Senate to try to, to try to kill it. Um, the state that it is in right now is much better than the state that it was when it started. Um, however, this is still a terrible bill, and it is a direct preemption of city local zoning or, um, regulation authority. It basically allows, and I may misspeak here, Jamie can jump in. Um, it basically allows if a gravel pit company owns or controls land before May seventh of twenty twenty-five, then they have the right to extract materials from that and follow the seam wherever that seam goes. Yeah. So.
Yeah. They can expand without any restrictions.
Yeah.
As long as they own the property. As long as they own the property.
Yeah, owner control, so I don't know how they're differentiating that. I.
Well, it could be, it could be all sorts of things.
The reason I say follow the seam, it's kind of, one of the issues with this is the gravel pit and the mining, um, in some ways are synonymous and in some ways are regulated differently, and so it's kind of tying to the idea of mining, that you find a seam and you mine that seam. And so it, it has language that's kind of tied there, but, um, ultimately, this is a bill that, uh, the league opposes and, um, is working to try to, to try to change. It doesn't look like that's going to happen necessarily, but one of the protections that's in here, originally, the date was January first, twenty twenty-six. They pared that back to May seventh, uh, twenty twenty-five, so that's a significant change, but still, I think a company could gain control of, uh, ground within the next few months if they wanted. The other thing that's really important is that before it talked about contiguous land that, uh, and they've defined that better now, that really limits this. Um, it used, it used to have much broader, um, definition as well as highway. It talks about having a highway, um, separating land and whatnot. Uh, highway by definition is very broad. It's any kind of right-of-way that, that vehicles travel, so even dirt roads and things like that could create boundaries that they would have to, you know, honor, but again, ultimately, this still is a preemption of local zoning authority, and that, by, that is just a bad deal.
So hypothetically, if I'm understanding you correctly, they could, if they discovered a, a vein underneath a bunch of residential homes, they could buy up all those homes and start digging.
That's my understanding too.
Especially if it, it comes from their original. They, they could just keep going.
Okay, they just can't get a new spot in the middle.
The way I read it, they can't get a new spot. It's a, it's an expansion.
Expansion of an existing pit.
But I, I could be wrong. I, I mean, some of that stuff's hard for me to read.
My understanding is anything they own or control by that date, and so if they claim the property by May seventh, one little, yeah, they can go down and. Do you read that differently, Jamie?
But hey, the good thing is. I read it the way you do. There's two separate provisions. One provision relates to contiguous land, and that doesn't have the January one limitation. And then you have the other, which is new land, and that does, or I'm sorry, it's no longer January one, it's the May limitation. But the new land has the May limitation, contiguous land does not have that time limitation.
But as the state keeps making these, um, jumps into local authority, they have put together a new federalism task force to make sure that the federal government doesn't get impeded with state authority.
I will not disagree with you, that, that there, there are some speaking out of both sides of your mouth, appearing behavior, right? Because it's, we're all for local control when that means state control, but sometimes it's not for local control when it means allowing the city to regulate the things that affect your residents.
Another bill that I think is really important, there's actually two bills that relate to transportation utility fees, um, of which we have SB three ten and HB four fifty-four. Um, they don't necessarily align. They need to, they need to come into alignment, um, which I think will take place, but, um, one of them is very similar to a House bill last year that essentially said cities, you know, can do this, and they'd simply need to go through a study process and public hearing process, which is what we've done. There's no concern with that necessarily. Um, however, uh, to speak directly, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints is not interested in paying a transportation utility fee with all of the locations that they have, and so they are working to get exemptions to the fee. And SB three ten currently has a couple of lines that specifically says you may not charge, you may not charge a tuff to religious organizations with nonprofit status, and so, um, the league opposes that bill based on those lines that, um, fundamentally, we believe that a user fee is a user fee, and if people are using the service, you know, pay for the service. There, that's still a conversation that I think will take place of, um, whether or not that, they will be included or not included in transportation utility fees.
This is totally off the cuff. Did they mention how many cities currently charge a tuff?
I believe there's fifteen right now.
Okay, thank you.
I do know that, uh, our process that was used, the study that was done initially, uh, did become a model for many other cities. Brief history, if you care, you didn't ask, but, um, the thirty-second, the thirty-second version is Provo City was the first city that implemented this. They specifically negotiated with the church because of how much land, um, is owned within Provo City by the church. Um, schools and churches and temples and all kinds of land, and so that was specifically negotiated, not, it didn't follow the rules of their study. Well, many other cities did studies like ours. Some cities just kind of picked a number based on, well, we need this amount of revenue. How do we divide that up amongst, you know, the residents and businesses? Here's the fee. Through litigation with Pleasant Grove City, who was, I think, the twelfth city to implement one, um, it has now become solidified that, yes, cities can charge a transportation utility fee. Uh, but legislatively, they're trying to clarify process and things like that, and so that's, that's why these bills are coming up, but again, the, the church, uh, really fought, uh, what was it, HB three sixty-seven last year, which, which would have kind of codified the study and, and the public hearings and whatnot, so. A little bit still to come on that one. Um, I'm gonna, I'm also gonna cut real quick to one that hasn't come out yet, but while we were on a call this morning with the league, uh, regarding HB three fifty-five, uh, Justin Lee, uh, said, everybody's watching because the quote-unquote land use bill to rule them all is being talked about, and if we are frustrated now, expect to be even more angry. That's the, that's the tease of within the next twenty-four hours, we expect a bill to drop that may be the biggest land use kind of preemption on local authority that, that we've seen over the last few years. That's why, if you noticed in your email, the league, well, a few of us that are on LPC, the league is actually holding a midweek LPC on Thursday at noon to talk specifically about that when it drops over the next, again, twelve to twenty-four hours or something.
Do we know who the sponsor is?
Not yet, no. I think it is, um, I don't want to, I don't want to say in case I'm wrong, but.
Okay, leave me some hope.
I, I am going to say it. The name that comes to mind is Colomore. It seems to be the battle that we fight, like Jamie says, over and over, is, is just, we're a subdivision of the state, so they make the rules for us, but when we say that's a big deal, we, we are local and we have a sense of what that local authority needs to be, especially regarding land use. You know, they've done a lot of.
Pushing that line, in this case, it seems like they want to push the line.
I'm just now.
There is a, there are some bills that the city, or that the league, uh, either supports or is neutral on. One that, uh, that we're neutral on is, uh, HB five forty-two, which ends the, um, Utah Economic, oh, it's the UEOC, which was created just a few years ago, um, as far as an economic development type, uh, tool. And it feels like the need has gone away. Basically, it, it ran its course, that commission ran its course, so they're discontinuing that commission. Um, the Commission on Housing Affordability, uh, affording of, Housing Affordability will continue, but the UEOC will change. Um, the league is wanting to work on that bill a little bit to maintain a seat. Because, um, ULCT had a seat on UEOC, but, uh, by discontinuing that, it would lose that representation, and so they're, they're hoping to maintain that. Um, there are, there are, you might have seen in the news, there was a bill SB two seventy-seven about government records and management and changing the state records, um, committee, and making that more kind of administrative. And, uh, from the league perspective and based on LPC conversation, that would be an improvement to the grandma process and the records process for residents and for cities. Going to the state records commission has created a lot of frustration for both parties, and, and this would be an improvement in the way that that, uh, office operates. I know that anytime, uh, government entities such as cities say they're in support of changes to government records and management, it comes across as, you know, a lack of transparency, but the details of that bill would actually be an improvement to the records management process, and so the league is in support of that.
Do they still keep the records in a big vault in the mountains? Wait, no, that was something else.
The other stuff I think is, is mostly, you know, watch your, watch your emails and see when action alerts come out, because over the next little bit, there will be, uh, there will be action alerts. They talk about the league army, meaning the membership of the league, mayor, city council, staff members of cities throughout the state, um, as things come up here over the last ten days, to make phone calls and communicate with, with, uh, senators and representatives and, and, uh, it will be time for that here soon. Mayor, anything else that you wanted me to bring up?
No, bless him. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. Okay, Public Works Facility update. Larry?
Um, I think everybody saw in their packet, um, a little summary from staff, which I very much appreciate. Um, we're still on schedule for August. Hasn't been a lot of new news. We, the meeting for tomorrow is canceled. Um, but you, if anybody drove by, you could see that the, uh, the material storage building, the structure's basically up, and they should start to skin that shortly. They're having a fun time figuring out how to skin it between the.
They, they've got it done.
Oh, I must, just the last two days now.
They've got it all, they've got it done, and they're, they're probably halfway across the roof now.
Wow, they moved.
So they're moving.
Yeah, they had to, I think they had to go into the soccer complex to.
They decided not to. They were going to do it off ladders.
That is crazy.
But they said the ladders would probably have to go on the.
Yeah.
Soccer, but they were going to use ladders.
So we should start to see the main building very shortly. The main building is there.
It occurs to me, we've, we've been referring to this on the, as the Public Works Building. But technically, there's three structures, so it's a public works complex.
Facility.
It just, just trying to clarify, because everything, the bond and everything says Public Works Building, but we actually have a complex of facilities.
Facilities. Any questions on happenings over there? I haven't seen Jeremy come by.
I know, I need to.
Yeah.
A lot of mud being trucked, cracked out.
There is a half to the city.
One, one, one other update, and maybe the mayor has seen it. I, I have not been there this week, so, but, um, they were going to start, uh, grading out, putting curb and gutter and getting the, the site prepped. They're trying to do asphalt as soon as they can get asphalt to clean up the site and, and help with that.
Is all of the asphalt the primary driving surface?
Asphalt is the primary driving surface. Have we have a ten-foot apron, I believe, on the, in and out on the doors.
But the entire lot is not asphalted.
Yeah, we're not developing the whole entire site.
The whole castle. Just where the facilities are.
Okay. Let's look for a motion to suspend city council and convey in South Weaver Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting.
We're moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Need to announce ourselves, is that what we need to do?
Do we need to, what do we need to do here, Lisa?
Oh, no, that's a closed.
I don't, I think that's a closed session.
On the back.
Okay. There we go, it's not on this one. Okay, so we're in our RDA board meeting. Appreciate it. We, uh, need to take care of a couple of items. We need to approve September tenth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Mayor, or Chairman, I move to approve September tenth, twenty twenty-four minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
RDA Resolution twenty-five dash zero one, diversion of property tax from community reinvestment project area and adoption of Old Fort Road Community Reinvestment Area Inter, Local Corporate Corporation Agreement. Any discussion on that? So everybody, Dave, you want, anything you want to say on that?
Uh, a quick summary, the we have, Lance and I have, uh, met with all of the various taxing entities. They, all of those boards or commissions have approved the agreement, so now. Various taxing entities, they, all of those boards or commissions have approved the agreement, so now as a redevelopment agency. We also, uh, are looking to approve those agreements. Uh, once those are approved, then there will be a window of time. Public notice will go out of a public hearing, uh, in at least thirty days. Uh, which will take place in April, we'll hold a public hearing at the RDA board for any comments from the public. Um, we'll, in the meantime, let the state know about the project area plan and budget. And, uh, after the public hearing, then we'd be able to officially, uh, kick this off and, and have the project in place, so. Tonight's action is simply to approve those interlocal agreements to allow the taxing, the, the tax, as has been discussed. Um, to go toward that plan and budget.
Thank, thanks, Dave. Any questions? For a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve RDA Resolution twenty-five dash zero one, diversion of property tax for a community reinvestment project area.
Second.
Motion in a second, uh, roll call vote, they're all in favor.
Roll.
Roll call vote, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Shouldn't need to really, as long as you've got the resolution number.
I think you're okay, you're, you're adopting the resolution as drafted.
Aye.
And aye.
Okay, unanimous there, thank you.
He did.
He did?
I did. For motion to adjourn board meeting and reconvey back into city council.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Hey, we are back. We've got reports, new business, because of time, if any, unless anyone's got something they'd like to. Discuss, it's important, I think we'll skip these two. Anyone object to that? And we'll look for a motion to move into a closed session.
So moved.
And discuss the deployment of security personnel, devices and, and systems.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.